Let's go ahead, Madam Clerk, and call the February 10th meeting of the City Council to order, please. And can we have -- let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Thank you, and again, welcome to the February 10th meeting of the Falls Church City Council. Can you call the roll call, Madam Clerk?
I'll call the roll. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Baruch.
Here.
Ms. Connolly.
Here.
Mr. Duncan.
Here.
Ms. Oliver.
Here.
Mr. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Z.
Here.
Mayor Tarter.
Here.
Thank you, Council.
And do we have any proclamations today?
We need to adopt the agenda.
Okay, and we have an amended agenda, as my recollection. Is that right?
It was amended, yes, so we need to amend -- to adopt the amended agenda. A motion for that.
Do we have a motion to adopt the amended -- the agenda as amended?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Okay, in a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Supposed? Okay, we'll go forward with that. Let's see what we've got here. Are there any --
(inaudible) to administer?
Yes, sir.
I said that we were amending the agenda to actually administer a note to one person.
Right, we won't give them the O's until after they're appointed, which would be the next meeting.
I understand, okay. And public comments? Do we have any public comments?
We have a -- you have on the agenda a report by Mr. Stevens from the ESC for their annual report.
That, and we have some additional public comments as well, but why don't we go ahead, Mr. Stevens, and hear your report. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Council members. I'm Tim Stevens, and I'm current Chair of the city's Environmental Services Council. We've submitted our annual report for 2013, which is in your package, so I won't go over those contents, but I welcome any comments or questions that you might have. I'll briefly share a couple of observations, however. As knowledge of environmental issues has increased over the years, we've expanded the scope of issues that we take up. The ESC has now been in existence for some 25 years, and when it first started out, it addressed two issues: litter and recycling, two very visible issues, I would add. And as you can see from our report, the number of issues that we've taken up has expanded quite a bit. Increasingly, it's the invisible issues that attract our attention, primarily greenhouse gas emissions from traditional energy sources and pollution from stormwater runoff, which you'll hear more about tonight. Because they are invisible, it no doubt adds to the difficulty of gaining consensus in solutions to address them. So we thank the two new council members, Councilmember Oliver and Councilmember Oliver, for having attended our two recent meetings, and we look forward to providing you input in 2014 on environmental issues that you bring to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all your service. Any questions from any member of council, or Mr. Stevens is here? Mr. Z, are you the liaison to this committee?
Well, I think it's only fair to subject my good friend, Tim Stevens, to a bunch of pointed questions. You know, it is indeed remarkable that the Environmental Services Council has gone from two issues to, you know, looking at things that have a bearing on how we live our lives, things that we consider not just longer just nice, but necessary for sustainability of our future. And I'm wondering, with all these things that the ESC is involved in, that maybe it might be time to consider changing the name to something more than Environmental Services. So that might be something you could comment on if I were to ask you a question. And secondly, if you could enumerate maybe the top three things you think might be very important to work on in the coming year?
Well, with respect to the name change, I think that's excellent, Council, and something that we would like to take up. It's interesting, as you look at the groups that do what we do in our neighboring jurisdictions, they each have a different name, so there's no consensus. But I think something that would bring in to bear something more with policy might be better. I was speaking and exchanging some emails with Annette Mills, who, of course, started the Environmental Services Council in Falls Church, and she explained that the source of the meeting had to do -- or of our current council, that the source of that name had to do with the fact that the city had an organization by that name 25 years ago, and so it adopted that name. Well, of course, things have long since changed, and so perhaps it's time for us to take a look at that, so thank you for that input. As far as the top three issues, that's an interesting question. I would say greenhouse gas emissions and climate change could almost take up the top three issues, but our role is really to respond to things that are of interest to you. So the things that matter to this council are the things that we'll be more than happy to take up, so thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for all your contributions to the city. We greatly appreciate it.
Could I sing one to you?
Absolutely, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you. Tim, I just wanted to note the -- as a longtime supporter of Smart Growth, and I want to note with appreciation ESC's comments, as you note here in your report on the Tanner Hill Project and the Harris Teeter Project, concluded that these projects should reduce reliance on cars for both occupants and city residents, thereby reducing the city's greenhouse gas emissions associated with vehicles, and would just invite you all certainly to provide input on the mixed-use projects that are coming down the road. We appreciate that input, and we appreciate your support for Smart Growth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tom Sterling?
Good evening, Council. My name's Tom Sterling. I'm den leader for Den 7. We're from PAC 681 and St. James PAC, and our wee blows are here tonight to observe a council session, and guys, want to stand up?
Sure, why don't you come on forward, and we'll get a picture with council.
That'd be great, thank you.
Would you like that?
Take your coat off.
I live at 200 North Maple Avenue. I'm here in -- well, I mean, aloha, how are all of you? Congratulations to those of you who are newly elected. I got elected as well. I'll mention that in just a minute. The -- I was trying to think of how many councils ago this would have been, but eight years ago I was elected for the first time to represent the city at the Community College, and then I was reelected four years later. Well, that's running out now in July. I'm off the board. I want to tell you how pleased I -- if you get to be my age, you've had probably quite a few different jobs, and this was the most fun job I've ever had, really, really interesting. It's an amazing place. It's the second largest in the country, and it's bigger than by double any of the universities here in the state. So it's a place where lots of stuff is happening, a lot of good things are happening. We have a couple of brochures that are available to you to look at to get more detail on all of that. I want to thank you and all the previous boards, councils in the last eight years who each year has ponied up money to cover the cost of your donation to the Community College. I'm not saying that very well, but it's been in the budget each time, and you can't imagine how much that's appreciated when I see other jurisdictions having difficulty doing it, the lack of willingness to do that. So it's always been fun to come here and see your willingness to support that, our Community College. When you think about that relationship, each year, and it's my -- I think it's going to be -- I forgot when it was founded, but it's coming up on 50 years. This community has supported the Community College, and in effect, it's sort of -- I look at that as a kind of a partnership, a recognition on both sides of the value that the other one has, and the consistency of doing it that many times when budgets are easy and when budgets are hard. So I really do appreciate that very much, and I appreciate the opportunity to represent you. And I referred to getting elected. Last May, the board itself elects its chair, and I got elected chairman of the board for this academic year. That's a -- when I got home and told my wife that, she said, "Isn't that the job that Frank Sinatra had?"[698.38][698.38](Laughter). Some of you are too young to know, to recognize that. He got paid better than I did, but the psychic pleasure of it was greatly. I just want to concentrate on the idea of partnerships, because I think that's really key. The college itself makes a lot of emphasis on creating partnerships, and I'm just going to refer to a couple of them directly related to high schools. They provide -- the college provides onsite counseling for students who are in their senior year, and helps them with the transition onto higher education. That's done onsite at high schools. If you -- we have a partnership with all of the colleges and universities in the state, including the public and private, that anyone that graduates with a two-year degree and has a respectful grade point gets in -- can get into any college or university in the state as a junior. You can earn college credits in many of the high schools, including George Mason, while you're in high school, and enter Nova or some other school already with college credits. And the college frequently uses a kind of a slogan in talking about its relationship with its students, and it refers to -- it expresses it this way, that they're partners with that student in their educational -- in achieving their educational goals. And I think that and the goals at the college, because it's not just a technical school and not just a degree-producing, they do both. There's two-year degrees, and then there's workforce preparation instruction. I'm going to stop with that and introduce a member of the staff of Nova's Annandale Campus, someone that most of you probably know, Bob Hall, he was sitting to my left. He's the outreach specialist for the Annandale Campus, and he's going to -- if some of you don't know Bob, who's been around here a while, let me just tell you, he was in the House of Delegates for 17 years, and more than half of that, he was -- he represented this city. He got redistricted out of it and continued it. Anyway, he's going to show you a little bit about things I missed saying, and extend an invitation to you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Hall. Please come up.
First, members of the council, let me sing the praises of Jerry Barrett, and what a great gym he's been to the city, because he was on the school board before he was a representative to the Nova's Advisory Board, and so I think it's a total of 14 years, both Community College and schools, is that right?
Eight and eight.
Oh, 16. All right, even more. So he's been, I think, a great leader in education here in the city. I wanted to just throw out some facts and figures. Right now, the Northern Virginia Community College, which we all know is Nova, is the second-largest two-year institution in the entire country. We are now number one in terms of the number of degrees conferred. Last year, we conferred more degrees and certificates than any other two-year institution in the entire country. This little postcard you have, it says, "Think you know Nova, think again," and it has some facts and figures, and actually, it's about a year and a half old, because some of it has gotten even better. Right now, this past year, over 78,000 people took a course at one of our campuses or centers or online at the Community College. 25% of all public high school graduates in Northern Virginia attend the Northern Virginia Community College. Of all Northern Virginia residents attending a college or university, 40% of them have gone to Nova. And you obviously are familiar with sort of the traditional student who gets out of high school and goes to the Community College and then transfers to another university or college, and like Jerry said, we have these guaranteed admissions agreements where, let's say, you wanted to get into the University of Virginia. They actually have, for want of a better word, a quota, because if they didn't, the whole school would be populated by Northern Virginians. So let's say you're in Falls Church, and you're trying to get into UVA. Well, gee, we already have enough Falls Church high school graduates there. You go to Nova, and after two years, with you earn your associate degree, you maintain your grade point average, they will accept you, no questions asked, and you will save a bundle of money. For example, you save -- a family would save $16,000 by having their child go to two years at the Community College and then transfer to George Mason. But one of the things I wanted to talk to you about tonight is our non-traditional students, our adult learners, which we think are where our growth is. This right here lists all the programs of study that you will find at Nova, whether it's a certificate or an associate degree or an associate of applied arts. That's for both traditional and non-traditional students. I've also given you a handout that actually was folded, but when I was leaving this afternoon, I realized I'd only had two left, so I scanned it and printed it, and I didn't want to fold it and mess up the fold. So we have a program called Adult Career Pathways for those students who maybe it's been a while since they were in school, they're trying to come back, they're a little nervous about it, so we give them some intensive counseling to help them through the whole process. We work particularly hard with veterans and those who are in the military in these programs. We also have a program that we started just this past fall called the Fridays Only Program, where you can actually earn your degree by taking courses only on Fridays. Some of them are hybrid courses, where half of your instruction is online, the other half is in the class, and then a few of them are all online. But if you go the two semesters, fall and spring, plus the summer semester, you can actually graduate in two years with a general studies degree and then transfer to another university. And we created this program specifically for adult learners, where they're in the workforce, they may not be able to attend classes during the week, but they might be able to work something out with their employer where they go on Fridays. We also have a Weekend Studies Program. In fact, we're just talking to Fairfax County Government about having their employees participate in these programs, in which we could tailor something that's just right for them, and obviously, we could do the same thing for the city of Falls Church. I also, as in closing, have given you the spring schedule of our Workforce Development Division. This is our non-credit side. We have about over 20,000 students that take these non-credit courses, which could be learning a different software, type of software, could be learning project management. We even, believe it or not, just started a workforce development class in quilting, so people can learn how to quilt. So this is -- I think a lot of people are not familiar with our workforce development efforts, and clearly, there are a lot of other schools that offer similar courses. A lot of them are not public, they're private institutions, and you would get a, frankly, a little better deal with going to Nova and taking workforce development courses. And the advantage of this to the workforce in Falls Church or anywhere else is this: your employees become more productive, all of a sudden, you are in a position to expand the business, make more money. You're paying a higher beep-hole tax when you do that, because you've just expanded the value of your business. You order more supplies, you're paying more sales taxes, so it benefits tax revenue as well as the individual. So in closing, let me say one thing. The Greater Falls Church Chamber of Commerce is having a mixer on the 25th of February at Bentley's down here at Annandale Road and Arlington Boulevard, and we are the sponsor, and we're going to highlight our workforce development and Fridays Only Program there. So please, I invite you all to come if you can. It's from 5:30 to 7:00 at Bentley's on Tuesday, February 25th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hall and Mr. Barrett, for your contributions to the city and to higher education here in Northern Virginia. It's greatly appreciated. Madam Clerk, do you want to go on to the written comments? Can you summarize the written comments for us?
Mr. Mayor, before the two gentlemen leave here connected with the Northern Virginia Community College, I mean, some of this data on this card is absolutely phenomenal. 75,000, 78,000 students. It seems to me that this is a critical institution for upward mobility and inclusion, and is fundamental to our region's welfare. So I wanted to thank Jerry and Bob Hall and the others connected with Nova for a job well done, and I think all this underscores the value of the city's contribution over the years, so thank you very much.
Mr. Z?
I would like to add my comments to, and accolades as well. The one thing I always look for, one that the catalog shows up at my house every two times a year, is whether, in fact, you still offer certification in welding.
Yes.
Glad to see that you do.
We teach welding at our Manassas campus. I think it may only be at the Manassas campus. Manassas and Alexandria have the automotive repair classes, but Manassas has the welding. You'd be surprised how many people have taken that course over the years.
Well, you might want to think about adding one more to this, because now that I've got a little bit more time, I think I'm going to finally learn how to weld. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you both for coming here tonight and for all your contributions to the city. Madam Clerk, would you mind summarizing the written comments?
Counsel, before you end your package, you have a letter from Mr. Neil Shawn at 1314 Robison Place. He expressed his view that Councilmember Connolly should recuse herself from all discussion and voting on issues involving her employer, the city of Falls Church Public Schools. Melissa Wolciak, 3030 Beechwood Lane, and the Roush family at 804 Jackson Street both expressed their support for an ice rink in the city of Falls Church. They noted that their children play ice hockey, and there is a need for ice time for them to participate in hockey clinics, and that they also frequent local restaurants when they take their children to these classes and events. With regard to the ongoing electronic petitions concerning water bills, you received an email -- there's an email in the package from residentsforeresponsivecity@gmail.com urging the council to read all the online petitions, requesting an audit of the water bills, and the online petitions continue to come in, and they started out coming in one at a time, now they're coming in as groups. However, if you look through the list that I provided of what we have so far, I don't know whether there's a glitch in their computer system, but we're not getting them all, so some of the numbers are missing, and the way they're being presented in clusters is kind of wonky. But there still have been -- there's not -- there aren't 150, but there's close to that. There have been a lot of emails received in this regard, and that -- those are the end of your comments.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shields, I imagine you'll be addressing that in the city manager's report. Before we get there, I thought I might ask Mr. Duncan, who spent the past couple days in Richmond as Chair of the Legislative Committee, could give us an update on his activities down there, and just let us know what's transpired.
Thank you very much. I'll be very brief, and I'm happy to talk about it further with individuals as per their interests. It was Local Government Day and the General Assembly on Thursday, and that's an opportunity for local government officials to come make their case to the state senators and delegates. This is the first chance I've had to attend. Mr. Snyder is an old hand at this. I wanted to express my appreciation to Assistant City Manager Cindy Mester, who does an amazing job working the people who we care about down there, not only our delegate and our senator, but the delegates and senators of neighboring districts, and the delegates and senators where she lives, and the ones she went to college with, and by the time we finished talking to them all, I felt like I'd gone up and down the steps. Well, let's just say it was the best day of exercise I've gotten for a while. But in all seriousness, you know, we're a small jurisdiction, and we have to magnify our impact as best we can, and I think Cindy does a great job helping us do that. We didn't have any big issues before the assembly this year. Probably the primary one, I suppose, was the charter change to align the leadership election with the move to the November election. The last memo I got from Cindy Friday night, she can update us on this, was that it was sailing through handsomely. Is that correct?
That's correct, so now we're just waiting for crossover.
Right, so no problems there. The probably main objective was in stopping bad things from happening. Mr. Snyder will be aware of that. Sometimes the best you can do is to hold your ground and keep things from getting worse. Just one example of that was the red light effort to repeal the ability for jurisdictions to have red light cameras, as we have here two now, is that right?
Four.
Four, oh, sorry, four. That apparently has been halted, so we will be able to retain local ability to run that service, which promotes safety, generates some revenue too, but mostly promotes safety. I guess the larger thing that I came -- and then on Friday, I should say, also after Thursday, where we saw Senator Sasselaw, Delegate Simon, of course, had audiences with them and their staff and/or their staff, and I happened to run into the Speaker of the House at the hotel Thursday night, had a nice chat with him. Turns out, he has a relative who lives here in Falls Church, so he actually has Falls Church on his mental map, which could come in handy someday, I think, maybe. On Friday, there was a briefing put on by Davenport Consulting, from whom we heard on Monday, and sponsored by Virginia Municipal League and Association of Counties also, about the financial picture and opportunities for local jurisdictions. A lot of good information there. I have some materials, again, I'd be happy to share. The main takeaway I came away from that with was compared to a lot of jurisdictions in the Commonwealth, we have, you know, tremendous assets and opportunities here. Our financial position is strong. Our rating, ratings from the agencies are very strong. They were represented at that Friday meeting, Fitch and Moody's, and our opportunities for economic development are really the envy of many jurisdictions across the state. So it's a cautiously hopeful mood that they presented to us in most of their presentations, and it suggested to me that, you know, we really need to move decisively to seize the opportunities that we have. To that end, I think we should look into possibly trying to enlist the assistance of the Governor's Office. Governor McAuliffe spoke to the VML meeting on Thursday, and, you know, we all know what a dynamo he is, and very pro-business, very pro-business development. I would suggest that we explore the possibility of getting the Governor's Office and Democratic Majority Leader Sasselaw, and even Speaker Howell, perhaps, together when the West End Project Committee gets its timetable set, because that really is a parcel so valuable that I think it is of, you know, not only state significance, but national, potentially even international significance. And I feel like the folks in Richmond would see that and would perhaps help us get the message out that we want to do something up there that is good, not only economically for our community, but also for the state. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Duncan. Any other questions? Let me ask you this, for both you and Mr. Snyder. I understand other jurisdictions, localities, send a whole group, the whole group goes down to lobby and interact with the state legislators. Do you recommend that? Either of you feel that that would be helpful to, you know, put forth Falls Church's position, or is it something where it really is not necessary?
I think everyone should experience Richmond, so it's probably, I would recommend that people go, as many as can possibly go in the future. I think it's to really understand the constraints that we live under. You have to go there and understand You have to go there and understand how the views there are sometimes so contrary to our views here. And the only way you can really understand that is to actually experience firsthand. So I think it would be a good idea.
That's very well said. It's amazing for a big state, you know, Virginia's a big state, how small a town Richmond feels like. And it occurred to me when we were talking to all the people that Cindy knew that, yeah, if each one of you just sort of looked at the list of the delegates and saw where they went to college, or grad school, or where they worked, each one of us would probably have some kind of a personal connection to two or three members. And, you know what, again, we're a small jurisdiction. We only have one delegate. We don't even straddle, you know, a lot of jurisdictions will straddle a couple of House districts, so they'll have two delegates that can speak for them. We don't have that. We have Marcus Simon, who's very able. Speaker Howe said, when I spoke to him Thursday night, "Oh, he's a nice young man. He's really going to go places here." Now, you know, Speaker Howe probably says that about all the folks he meets. But he did seem, you know, sincere, I thought, and Marcus, I think, has made an impact there. But I think, yeah, it would be a good opportunity certainly to rotate different people down there, and to participate in the VML programs generally, because the information they put out is very good, non-biased, and again, helps you see where we are in a broader perspective.
... report, are there any requests, council requests? Okay. Why don't we go on to the report of the city manager? Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. I'd like to use my time tonight, just a note at the outset, that we have a fairly light agenda tonight, so we wanted to use the time together for two briefings, first on the City Hall project, and then on the stormwater ordinance before taking action on the NVTA resolution, so that the next time we engage in those issues, we'll have covered sort of the broad, the big picture on those, and be able to do a deeper dive on those at a later time. So before I turn things over to Cindy to provide the council with a briefing on the status of our conceptual planning for City Hall Public Safety Improvements project, on the water bills, I would just note very briefly that we are in the procurement phase of bringing in an outside person to take a look at our, our last bill, which I think, given the fact that this is our wrap-up final billing, it's useful just to make sure that we can communicate very clearly with the public about that last, last billing, and how we're closing our books on our, on our water system. And so I think there's some public value in doing that. It's also responsive to the petitions that the city clerk just read out earlier tonight. So we're in the procurement process for that. We'll have a further update, and we'll post those publicly as, as we move through that process and select an outside firm to do that work for us. So the briefing tonight on the City Hall Public Safety Improvements, Cindy will go through a few slides, I think, in our draft run-through, is under 10 minutes, but we have done work with Dewberry, and we want to share that work with the council. Just very briefly, the purpose of this project, which is already approved in the CIP, but has not been yet approved by council in terms of how we will proceed exactly with this project. But the purpose of it is to address public safety needs in City Hall, specifically the operation of our court system, and how prisoners and, and the public interact on court days. Moving public meeting spaces to the front of the building, so we don't have people wandering through the building, wondering where their public meeting is supposed to be. Create additional space to conduct the public's business, and modernize the building, which is over 50 years old on this wing, and 30 years old on, on the newer wing. So with that brief introduction, Cindy.
Thank you, Mr. Shields, and council. If I could ask a council member to dim the lights, it might help to see the PowerPoint for the audience. You also have hard copies at your dice. It's behind the city flag. There's four that just slide, sliders. Thank you. This is, as we talked about at the retreat, one of those milestone touchpoints for council, where, as Mr. Shields indicated, the funding has been approved, 11.7 million for the City Hall renovation and expansion in three previous fiscal years, but the request and direction from council was to give a 20% concept design before we go into full engineering. What I'm presenting tonight is about 10%. We just got this report, and the timing with the retreat, and the agenda seemed good to give a milestone or touchpoint check-in, as Mr. Bruff mentioned at the retreat. So tonight, we'll go over some of the goals and benefits that Mr. Shields highlighted. Two options. One is the existing facility renovation expansion is approved in CIP, and Mr. Duncan, during a, last year's budget work sessions, asked for us to look at a new City Hall and teardown option, which I'll present to you at a high level this evening. We have some design alternatives and functionalities, some cost implications, and then to close, I did a side-by-side of the two options of renovation and expansion of the existing building versus a tie-down, a teardown, and then also some next steps in the staff plan to get council's feedback. The goals and benefits, as you'll have in the PowerPoint hard copy as a reference, deals with public security. That's police, that's court, central entrance, and separating the public and private so that we have security, and it makes it much easier for evening and after-hours use of this building. ADA accessibility, which is a significant issue, as is water intrusion mitigation, energy efficiency, as we talked about at the retreat, and then earlier with the Environmental Services Council. A lot of circulation, wayfinding issues, as well as building stormwater and life safety code compliance that we can bring into current code status. And then design a space needs that's definitely a 20-plus horizon. And both options I present tonight will give you that 20-year horizon. So starting first with the City Hall renovation and expansion concept, a lot of people have asked for sort of what does, what could that front central entrance look like? So I'm about to show you four options, and there are four of them because they're in draft. We haven't done any community input, but the architects are designing to sort of give you a sense of what does it look and feel like. So here, you're at the intersection of Little Falls and Park. The current Harry Wells sign would be right here, and then you'd look up the 11-foot grade to the City Hall complex. Here's another view. Instead of the pinnacle point on the center, you have a flat, you have a little more brick, but the pointed roof again, and then one that has a lot more brick. And so you have the ability with our architectural designs, as we go to the next phase, to really get a feel for what the community wants this building to look like. In all cases, it's the same kind of focal point up from the intersection. This is a blocking massing that kind of gives you the concept of what we're looking at. The current City Hall is an H, east wing, central corridor chambers, where we are now, west wing. The concept is a below-grade secure parking for police, sheriff, and the judges, with surface parking up here for the public. This increases the parking capacity about 45 spots, and provides secure place underground for police to transfer weapons from private vehicles to cruisers. Animal warrants, dead animal evidence can be stored outside, bikes and chains and those vehicle things. Come into a nice central front entrance, go down to the two meeting rooms that I'll show you a little bit about, go up to the floor level where we're at now, where you can then go into chambers, and you have a common reception kind of area. This is just a sample of what a stairwell and elevator could look like, not designed yet. This is just some of those examples where you can come in, and now you can go up here by elevator and stairs to the chambers and the lobby area, easy access down to Commissioner Revenue, Treasurer, DMV, voters. We're looking to add the expansion in the back to allow for this corridor, which is kind of where the TV crew is behind me, would now be a direct access to the clerk of the court, so you could pay all your tickets and take care of that, versus wandering all the way through City Hall to get to a long line. This area back here becomes a meeting room for the judge, closed session for council, a break room, and a full ADA accessible compliant bathroom. This is the lower level. You come in the center and you go down. This is the meeting room that could be what is now the Dogwood. This is a comparable meeting room, but could be divided in half. So you end up being able to have all your after-hours meetings with the Environmental Service Council, HSA, Housing Commission, Tree Commission, and all of our variety volunteer citizens. Easy access into the front after-hours, restrooms, break room, vending machines right there. Then behind that would be the after-hours police lobby, dispatch, EOC, sheriff, and so this lower level behind becomes the public safety area. The rear becomes where IT is. The staff could be there instead of now in the mechanical floor, and we move all of the mail and package delivery to one central place in City Hall, because right now it goes everywhere. And from a public safety standpoint, if there was any concerns with packages for terrorism or chemicals or biologicals, they're all in one central place on the exterior of the building. Over 50% of this project is designed to improve public safety, both police, courts, and then just operations of the building. This, when you come into the central front entrance, now you're on grade to where Public Works Engineering Staff sits. This would become the Development Services counter. The one-stop shop would be on the first floor, instead of people trooping through the building trying to find how you get to the permits counter now on the third floor. And we'd be able to connect the two wings for staff, and so staff and citizens don't have to do the down-cross-up action. And we could also make sure HHS and Court Services would move back in for consolidations. And that shows the connection on the third floor. And we're, we're trying to rename these, so it's one and two, because there's really no two on this wings, so one and three doesn't make much sense. And then this is just the very lowest level for all the police, and then things where you do storage and mechanicals. I put this in here just so you'd have a copy. It's a little of a busy slide, but it gives you the side view, so you can see how we're taking the split foyer and moving it into a joined building with easy flow for both citizens, staff. So that's the City Hall expansion and renovation in a real highlight. And the other option that we were asked to look at is a rebuild/tear-down scheme. Now, the City Hall expansion has had a lot more work, because that's been what's been through three CIP processes and what had been approved. So this is to give you a sense of what it could look like if we rebuilt on City Hall before we turned down the current building, tear down the current building we're standing in. So to give you a landmark, you'd have Park, Little Falls, and you'd bring a new building 25 feet off the sidewalk, which is per zoning, so you basically do the urban style down at the street. This footprint is not necessarily what it would look like, it's just a sample of how you get to a 20,000-square-foot plate with a little bit of courtyard. Instead of the parking in the front in the sort of grassy park area, you would move that to the back. So this is the new parking structure, but you can see the existing H of City Hall. You wouldn't be able to do the parking until you tore down City Hall, so you'd have to do some staging. But that's a sample of how you could put a new City Hall on this site, and then tear down the existing City Hall. This is a sample of what the architecture would look like. Here's the intersection of Little Falls and Park, where we had you positioned on the earlier concepts. And this is a four-story, 50,000-square-foot building, and you could have different architectures, but you bring it to the street look. The cost for that, 50,000 square foot, excuse me, it's a three-story. We played with some four-story options. With two levels of parking in the rear is a little over 24 million. Add another for demolition and hazmat, and so then you're at about 26 million. If you wanted to build out to four-story and add additional square footage to this building for retail, renting out, or real future use for space, then you would have to add another 12.6. So you're about a $38 million project on that one. There's no cost estimates, as you see in the footnote, for the relocation, temporary parking, furniture and fish, fixings. So it really probably is at least a 40 million project by the time you estimate it, all that, whereas in the existing building, we'll reuse a lot of furniture and fixings. So that gives you the cost comparison, which then I've now just tried to do a quick slide summary of the comparisons of the two concepts, expansion renovation versus teardown and rebuild. They're both set at a 50,000-square-foot comparison, both look to provide staff space for 20-year horizon. The adopted renovation expansion is 1.7 million. For the teardown rebuild, you need at least 25 million at the 50,000-square-foot. In both cases, you can achieve the goals and benefits that we identified at the beginning of this overview. With the current project, you would retain that traditional look and kind of keep that parking, park and street active area on Little Falls and Park versus behind. The teardown rebuild would give you much more of the urban, because you'd need to bring it totally to the sidewalk in order to fit it in. With the current project, you would retain the core building infrastructure and our existing police and court functions. We're not looking to tear down the jail cells and chambers where we're sitting now, recently renovated. In the new design, you would need to rebuild all of that, so you'd have a higher cost for those core unique functions. Also, the recent reinvestment that we've done into this building and the roof, the snow grails, the chambers, the IT sprinklers, in the current project onsite, you'd retain and benefit from that. If you tear down this building, those would be projects, funding used for a couple years, but not for their life. And then, in either case, you need to do some phasing of the construction, but the existing building, we're obviously going to have to construct, move, renovate, and it's a very strategic moving while we continue to provide services to the public. In the new project, you would have a new building that you could totally build out before you move into it, but there'd be no parking onsite, and so we'd have to figure out how to provide temporary parking locations and shuttle. And so then in closing, sort of the next steps is this touchpoint this evening for council reaction, or when you want to discuss it further. In February, I'll have a full briefing to the Planning Commission on their next CIP work session, going in much more detail to the adjacencies and the details of the design. And then the Judge McHugh, who's the head judge for our Court Security Committee, has asked for a briefing, and so that'll be the last week of February. And then the next touchpoint would be the okay to go ahead and proceed to the 20% concept design, as discussed at the last budget work session, when the final CIP amount was approved. And then the intent was always to do final confirmation with staff, and then a public engagement charrette piece to get reaction to the look of the field, the design, and then that would come back for another touchpoint with council. And assuming approval to proceed, then we would go to full engineering construction, and actually construct the project. Be glad to entertain any questions or receive comments.
Thank you. Did anybody else want to go first?
I think it's you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first, Cindy, thank you very much for all this information. I've really not had a chance to dig deeply into it, so I reserve the right to ask a few questions offline. But it's been a long time coming, information on this build-new option, and I know we've had a lot on our plate, and there's every reason in the world for that, but now that we have that information, I would, I would strongly encourage my fellow counselors to explore this option, ask questions about it. This is going to be more in the nature, I guess, of a comment than a question, but let me begin with one question. The current square footage of the building now is about 40,000?
About 41,000.
About 41,000.
Under 42,000.
Right. So you're, even the small build-new option that you lay out is 50,000 square feet, right?
Yeah. So we would grow this building to 50,000 square feet, and then we modeled the teardown build-new option at the 50,000 square feet, because that meets the staff needs and security for a 20-year horizon.
Understood. So, so either option is going to provide us with more space than we have now. Even the, even the build-new, build-new small, or not small, I suppose, but build-new 50,000 feet is a significant increase in size for space in City Hall. Okay? Okay?
Both cases, much more efficient, which is where we recapture a lot of hallways and skewerous little areas.
Absolutely. Lord knows, nobody has worked the nooks and crannies of this building more than you to try to get a plan that would produce something. Which leads me to the point that I really want to make, which is, I mean, I would like us to be in the business of planning for the long term here. We talk a lot about it in terms of our budget. I think our facilities merit that same kind of approach. And when I say long term, I mean long term. I don't mean 20 years. I mean 50 years. And I would invite, again, my colleagues to consider the build-new option as a solution that would solve our municipal space needs for multiple generations at a time when borrowing costs are at historic lows and provide us with a building that is just bound to be, I think we all know, superior to any add-on or addition or tack-on in terms of accessibility and environmental advances and security and versatility of use, I think. You know, the objective here, I think, is to do real and permanent good. And if we explored the build-new option carefully and perhaps ask ourselves whether we need 50,000 square feet or whether we could do with a building that is some larger than we have now, but perhaps not that large, we could do it at a budgetary figure that would, over the 50-year life of the building, be cheaper than a 20-year addition that doubtlessly, given our experience here, would have us back within 10 years talking about how it's inadequate and we need to do this and that, and we should have done more when we did it. So that's the pitch that I'm going to ask questions about, and I appreciate the information you provided tonight.
Mayor, if I may, I do want to clarify. I was doing a 20-year space needs, but the building itself is going to have a longer life cycle. And whether it's new or this existing, every 30 years, you better be looking at roof and your mechanicals, and you'll have to reinvest. And so I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that. And I would also want to be clear as we consider further options. The 50,000 square feet is about the minimum that size that we need to do for a functioning City Hall for the long term. Most of that new space we're doing is for the meeting rooms and central spaces. Not a lot for staff, but it does allow for growth. So I would not recommend smaller than a 50,000-square-foot footprint.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Connolly?
Would you recommend larger than 50,000 square feet?
You know, since I've just presented the CIP to the Planning Commission, and I've been looking at the full priorities and needs of this locality, I think this is a good plan that meets the long term and is affordable within your library space needs and all the school space needs, roads, signals, and so forth. So I think this is a good-size plan, not too large for the little city, but adequate enough that we're not, in a year, going for short space.
Right. And can I ask one more question? Since you just mentioned the library, and I know this has come up before, but not while I've been sitting here on this days, there's this, if we extend the project and have 80,000 square feet new building, can the library be part of that?
The current proposed library model is 30,000 square feet. So if you went to lease the 80,000 theoretically, the square footage is the right amount. Having talked with the Library Board of Trustees and the library, they, there's a lot of community support for the current location, obviously, but they are a little concerned how it would be designed so that they're functioning and separate from court and police and all of those other functions that would then be intensely co-located in one site. But square footage-wise, it's physically feasible.
Mr. Baruch?
Cindy, thanks very much. Just as far as how the CIP is processing through as it relates to the City Hall options, on the expansion piece, which deals with the front undergrounding, is that sort of a unique piece that's being looked at by the Planning Commission?
The council has approved all four components financially. So the parking, the front, the rear, and all the renovations have been budgetarily approved. So the Planning Commission previously has supported all four components, and so when they're looking at it right now, they're looking at it holistically. And that's what the February 18th work session will be. Now, we have done some design work, you know, so that you can see the central front piece, but this part back here doesn't work for moving dispatch and police down unless you have more space here to move things around. So it really, as we got into this level of design, made it flow and be a long-term, multi-generational plan if you have the rear expansion as well.
And just on the rear part, the front piece with the undergrounding and the Sallyport that's underground, was there further examination done to see if there's any way to make that fit in the back?
Yeah, we did do some look at that, and I do have the chief here with me. You may not be able to see her in the corner if there's any real specific questions. But we did look at trying to do it in the back, but then you have now tighter fit on Cherry Hill Farmhouse, but you also are bringing the inmates into the Sallyport on the same area for your police function and your judge. What you get with this design is here's the below-grade parking. They have a corridor straight back in to all the police functions on G3 and 2, also right back to the Sallyport. So the prisoners come in and go into the cells here. And then there's a proposed new elevator here that would transport the inmates directly up sort of behind me into the court versus having traverse where the judge and the police are. So we did look at that, but the segregation of front and back is what's recommended for standard design of courts and police functions.
Okay. So with that, again, that was one area of the undergrounding and the parking that I think the notion would be kind of a check-in on. And I'm glad that we have this check-in, but it's one that I hope my fellow council members in the community and also the chief and the consultants will look at a little bit carefully because, or more carefully, again, as we go through this process because that carries a pretty high-price tag associated with it.
Yeah, we did a very intensive review up to this point, and I have done a major, high-level report instead of walking you through all of the pieces. But up to this 10% point, we've done a pretty intense look, but what the actual design and blocking, this is just rough blocking. But we spent a lot of time on that front versus back issue because of past council discussions.
And is the sense right now that the back option would not work appropriately for what's needed?
To put the parking behind there?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. And is the notion that for public safety reasons, we need the front undergrounding?
For public safety purposes, you need that undergrounding secure. So whether you do it in the front and back, it would be my recommendation, and chief, come on up, that you would still want to do below-grade or some kind of secure in the backs.
Let me ask it this way. I mean, right now, we're all facing budget constraints, and we are making public safety improvements. What I want to get a sense of, just to be clear, is the undergrounding, is this gravy or is this things that we need to do? And I hope, chief, I know I'm putting you on the spot. It's, we've had some conversations about it, but we're trying to make tough decisions. And public safety, I know for myself and probably other council members, is very important, but we're not experts in this area.
Sure.
But we're, I know that I'm trying to make, as we're going through the budget process with the CIP and operating budgets as well, we're trying to really separate things out of what are key elements and what is sort of gravy. And on this piece, specifically the parking, I'd like to get your take on it.
Because of the nature of the grade of the building in the front, it was recommended through the building to do an under-grade in the front to limit the footprint expansion to go down. And going down, what it allows for you to have is underground parking. But it's more important as to how people move in and around the building, more than protecting cars and parking and assets. What underground parking does is it provides, in addition to just parking itself, it provides shelter in place, which is huge, not only for your employees here, but for the public in general if there was an emergency. It provides, obviously, parking. It provides outdoor space that's needed inside the building, but is also needed outside the building for such things that should not be stored inside the building, such as hazardous materials. It separates not only the, your VIP judges and some people from the prisoners. Because the prisoners, the problem with the prisoner portion of the Sallyport is that the holding cells can't be moved. That is steadfast in the back cannot be moved. There's not much room in the back for them to dig down, and I'm not sure that the degree of grade back there would allow for such. But it does separate them, and it allows for options for, you know, like we said before, the parking, the flow of the building, for the different transportation of the prisoners versus your judges versus your police versus your sheriffs. It limits the actual footprint that you're going to expand, meaning less trees cut down. And it's actually pretty invisible in terms of expanding because you're going down. You're going to have to dig down deeper to get more space. And because of the grade here, it was suggested and made it easier through Dewberry and Davis and actually one of our city employees.
So if I can just ask a follow-up to that, Mayor. So understanding sort of what we get with the project, I go back to the question that I have with, we've got limited resources, both on the CIP and operating budget.
Mm-hmm.
We think about them differently, but still one pool of money at the end of the day of how much debt service we can take on. Is this something that you view as being core, that's needed, understanding that some of the aspects of dealing with securing the evidence room, the IT issues, and making sure that the servers were protected, that we have a way of protecting evidence and securing that? Does that fit within this, within that category that I view as key, that we need to do now and need to move forward? Or is sort of the underground parking and everything that comes with it more of gravy? And it would be good to do?
I think it's much needed somehow, some way, that we take the, particularly the evidence that is held within the basement of the department that has little to no airflow out from where people sit and work because it is stagnant, it's offensive. We're talking about, you know, may it be drugs, may it be bloody clothes, may it be dead carcass animals. Those are within this building that sit in that basement area for those employees to sit through as long as they are there, and sometimes weeks and months. As far as it going into an area that would have circulation and an outside storage would be reasonable. As far as what this building provides us, as far as sheltering in place, is very minimal. Possibly nothing for public, but minimal for employees. I've been here with tornado warnings and real tornadoes. I've been here through Del Raychos. I've been through a number of things. And the employees here have very minimal places to shelter in place. And this would offer not only for the employees, but for council and for the public to go to a place if indeed there was an emergency, maybe man-made or natural. I've worked in environments with underground parking. They're invaluable outside of parking. And it's about people movement. It's about moving people where you don't necessarily know where they're going. And that has to do with VIPs. That has to do with prisoners that are dangerous. Each and every Wednesday, this courtroom hosts some of your toughest felons that would be in the, in the city and/or county because their preliminary hearings are here. So it's not only traffic, it's not only misdemeanors, but you have your felons that are coming in here. They are walking into your public areas. They're in your public elevators. You can't have the mix of judges, police, and everything as you do in the front and in the back. It's best to have them separated. They're separated everywhere you go, outside of the City Falls Church. So is it really just nice to have? No, I think it's pretty necessary to have. I think it's above, as far as the building recommendations in terms of the architects, I think it's reasonable. I think it limits your footprint. I think it limits your cut-down of trees. And I think it's, you know, as far as the police that sit and roll call and smell all those things that they do, I think it'd be necessary. I don't know else we would do that in the back. I don't think there is an option for the back to have a covered, secured area for evidence.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, Mr. Duncan?
I just wonder if the chief had any thoughts about whether the build-new approach, which is, I guess, fairly new, but have you looked at it enough to know whether the problems that you identified could be addressed if we built from scratch?
And a build-new approach, quite honestly, I think what we would do is start from scratch and probably go to, and they have all over the country, these, either they have them webinars or they have seminars where you actually go and watch people that give you whole packets on how to build public safety buildings. So we, we could design anything we wanted to, and much like we have with Dewberry and Davis, we could cut space, make it very efficient based on what our needs are. The holdings, may it be the holding cells to the courtroom, to the elevators, you know, eliminate, you know, space that's not needed. It's very difficult in an existing building to take a, you know, certain room and make it something that's absolutely, totally functioning for everybody. So.
Thank you very much. Could I just ask one follow-up question to Ms. Connolly's comment? Cindy, you'll know the numbers here off the top of your head, just looking at the numbers. So the renovation option is going to run 12 million, isn't roughly the price tag?
That's renovation and expansion and parking, the full project.
So 12 million. And the library proposal, as it's now presented to us, is how many million, remind me?
18.6 without any parking.
It's eight, so it's 19 million without any parking.
Right.
Okay. So as I look at that, that's 12 million for City Hall renovation-expansion, 19 million for library without any parking. So it's $31 million for a renovated and expanded City Hall and a library, new library, to be fair, but a library with no parking. And your build-new 80,000-square-foot, as you answered in response to Ms. Connolly, is 38 million. You said maybe 40 million. So the delta, as Dan Gardenros used to say, between those is $9 million. So for $9 million additional, we would be able to build new City Hall and library with parking. I guess my question out of all this is if the, Mr. O'Conde, could run us the numbers for the debt service costs on 40 million over, I'm going to say, 30 years as opposed to 31 million over however many years you thought you were going to finance the two smaller options?
We can run those scenarios because we've been running them for council. I would have, or for Planning Commission, my apologies. We would have to reassess the parking costs because the tear-down rebuild at 80,000 wasn't necessarily parking at library level, so we'd have to reassess that. And I did put this graphic up just to clarify for one question from Mr. Baruch. Right now, the, an additional reason for doing this in the front is we're going to be excavating and going down one level here so you get economy of construction by going ahead and excavating it now and building it now. To do it later, you'd have that cost, and you wouldn't get the interplay interchange that we were discussing earlier. To do it later, you'd have that cost and you wouldn't get the interplay interchange that we were discussing earlier.
Thank you. Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I must confess that this is probably the first time I've paid close attention to, uh, these plans. And my first impression, not having seen these before, is I'm a little underwhelmed by the effort and the amount of money that's going into this. I think that, uh, the first thing I look for is a resolution of clarity and circulation separating public from governmental functions, uh, in particular, the, um, police force. I still see much evidence of, uh, cross circulation. And it may be the thing is I just, uh, in looking at this and not finding what I'm looking for. So, uh, looking forward to maybe more, um, discussion with, with different staff if you can explain to me. But, uh, given that, I, um, and my experience that, uh, you're doing probably two of the most difficult things, uh, with the greatest impact on money. One, you're going underground. And we know you're always going to exceed the budget when you dig in the dirt. You just don't know what's there. And the second one is you're trying to fix up a 30-year-old building while operating it. It's, uh, and building an airplane while you're flying it, uh, if you follow the analogy, is never fun. But, uh, it's also much more costly than you expect it to be. So, um, as I said, I'm looking forward to more intense conversation to, uh, get to my due diligence. Thank you.
And on that point, I'm glad to go in any more detail, one-on-one or a separate work session. I, we have a lot more slides in terms of the adjacencies and flows and I didn't bring them all out tonight. But be glad to walk through it with, with anybody.
Ms. Oliver?
Public safety, of course, is the primary reason that we need to focus on this. But can you clarify for me the change in, um, green space between the two versions?
For the, um, expansion renovation, the green space will stay basically the same. Um, the new one, we have only just started kind of modeling. But you'd put the parking back here, the building here, and then we would look to see what we could do to have green space back here. And maybe do an extra level of parking so you could have a green roof. Um, we'd have to look because we'd also have to make sure we are complying with the stormwater management as well. So we haven't gotten to that level. It will be a little harder to try to replicate it in the back.
So in, in building new and pulling the building forward, we lose the green space in the front and it's not being replaced with green space in the back?
We would have to design it to put it on top of the parking deck and wrap it around. And we're not at that level of sorting out how you would do it because you do have parking back here that supports the community center, their drive aisle and the farmhouse. So you have limited space. It, it could be done in terms of water quality and quantity. You may not have that physical area of openness that you have now.
Anything else? Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much. Um, um, I think there's been some good work down here and I appreciate it. I, I, I don't want to, um, however, um, suggest that the teardown, um, and replace option is quite as simple as the few numbers that have been thrown around tonight. I think first of all, um, if you were to combine the library and the City Hall on the same site, in the site here, um, under the land grant for the city library, we would lose that property because it would no longer be a library site. That would revert to the family, my understanding. So that's some collateral damage with that option. Second option is if you put an 80,000 square foot, um, building on this site, you would have a major impact, it seems to me, on the historic and recreational aspects of Cherry Hill Park. So, um, I, I, I think if, I, I think you've well laid out this particular option. I think architecturally, actually, I find it very appealing to have the, the front, to use that space and to have that open like that. I'm more convinced tonight than I've ever been about the front underground parking. I've been very reluctant on that because it seems to me a lot of work, a lot of tear up. Uh, it seemed to me that other options ought to be possible. I still would like to refine and I think Nader asked some questions along that line. Um, I think if we are talking about combining both the library and the City Hall on this site, I think we need much more information about what that option would look like. And I appreciate Councilmember Duncan's questions and his desire to have that a- aspect fleshed out. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't do that at this point. Um, I'm wondering if we maintain the City Hall and the library, whether we couldn't do some combined parking somewhere to reduce the pressure on both facilities. Um, that would be, um, something that I'd like to see, uh, considered. And then finally, this does have to be put in the larger context of not only a new high school, but we're hearing increasing discussion about a potential new elementary school as well at, at our growth of, uh, of enrollment. So we're going to have to be very, very careful how we manage all of this together. So there's some severe financial constraints on what we do. So, um, I guess, again, I think this option is pretty well fleshed out, what you would do on this site. Although I, I still have the same questions that Councilmember Baruk did about the parking in the front. But I'm, after hearing the chief tonight, I, I think something significant along that line has to be done. Uh, I do think that the teardown option and rebuild, um, needs much more refinement if that's going to be a serious option. And we need to do a lot of work with the library and what would be the impact of a building that size on this site. I think it could be extremely damaging. Uh, but I'm interested to see that fleshed out. Finally, I'm interested in seeing basically renovate this, renovate the library, and then can we find, wh- how can we best combine parking needs, um, to serve both sites?
On the combined?
Is that unreasonable? I mean, I, I, I don't want to keep you constantly looking at new options, but I think you've fleshed out one pretty well. We can see it. You worked on it really well. Um, I do have a couple of questions there. Then I think we need to flesh out the, the teardown and, and re, and build, combining both sites, as Councilmember Duncan has suggested, uh, tonight is an option. And then look at the library and the, and the City Hall maintained on their current site, basically their current footprint. What can we do about parking that's necessary to serve the two?
Yeah, and on that third part, regardless of what you do with the facilities, the downtown area planning and the work that staff has started is looking at that because you need general parking anyway. And so there are already some identification on shared sites near the library. You've got the Kaiser Public Park now, what could be at State Theater. So regardless of the facilities, that's an important discussion to have. And this, um, design here is three stories. And so if you combined it, um, you know, to the, to incorporate the library, you're going to be increasing that mass. So we would have to look at that more closely. And at some point, I, I do request a process in which we can get a decision because I've spent a lot of money designing the teardown or the expansion and the renovation because that's what is approved. We took some of that money to start this design, but it would be too costly to take both options to 20%. And so we can flush out this a bit more. But I would like to bring it back to council to make a decision because you, the budget will not afford building out both of those at 20% or more.
Are the three options I laid out unreasonable? I don't, I don't say go to 20% for the other two, but.
No, I think what we would do is look at the architecture of this one and the floor plate a little bit more and look at some of the adjacencies and how it would flow. Um, we would need to cost out more the, uh, unknown dollars that are, and footnoted there. So you'd have a truer cost, um, for what's there at 38 million because that's not the full cost.
Right.
So I can work with some more of that and maybe get it closer to a, a 10% without going, um, full bore on either and come back to council.
I'm feeling some urgency too that we move to some sort of decision, but I, I, it is an important decision. I don't want to rush it. I don't want to have one option fully fleshed out, at least reasonably fleshed out, and then have two that really aren't and so they sort of drop off because they haven't been thought enough. I think it's reasonable to go through a bit more of a process to look at what I would view as, as two more options, reasonable as far as we know, which would be, as Councilmember Duncan has suggested, combining the two and putting them here in this current site. And then the s- the third one being to sort of bring the library into the picture, but keeping it at two separate locations and what can we do about perhaps shared parking for the two, maybe?
And we can, we can run the debt service module. I think both, all of you got your CIP notebooks in your mailbox today. And so you can see the debt service and the school program. And so then we could add in the debt run for a, um, 80-square-foot building. And just remember, you'll see the, the, in the, um, CIP, the high school, Mary Ellen Henderson is not running in your debt service because you still need to work out the financing plan as part of the process that you all are kicking out this week with the task force. So we didn't presuppose what that recommendation would be. But you definitely cannot finance 100% of the high school and middle school. You need some other partnership financing plan.
And I guess the fourth option's been talking, talked about, which is you put one or all of these functions in some new development somewhere. I, the, the problem with that is I just don't, I don't see that happening in the next five to 10 years minimum. See, I mean, even if you had the project there, so I, I, I don't know what you'd do with that option. I mean, that, that idea. I mean.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you have the land and you take land off the tax rolls. And a lot that we've been hearing through the library survey and as we work on this campus, you have synergy of City Hall, Community Center, Cherry Hill, the library. You have a campus that's a, uh, community identity. And so that option would certainly change that factor. And then where do you find the land? That would be, maybe not the top priority for where the city needs to be focusing its energy and its finances would be my initial reaction.
When, when we do come back to council, we will have, um, a roadmap for decision-making so everybody understands the steps and the process because decisions do need to be made and we, and we respect that. And they need to be made ultimately with some, some more public engagement on these things. So we're at the 10% design phase where we're touching base. We're getting, I think, some good feedback on them. But ultimately, decisions do need to be made because we have some pretty pressing, um, issues with this building that, that do need to be addressed. This, this proposal does come from the place that this building has good bones. Um, and it, and it can be made if we can get the flow with it right to, we can solve a lot of the problems we're dealing with within this space and save significant amounts of money.
Mm-hmm.
The new building option is easier. I think it's probably more desirable, maybe, in some respects, but it is really expensive. And so when you put that in the context of all the other capital projects that we have in the city, that is a pretty daunting challenge for us. And so that's why we are doing the deeper dive to really try to figure out if we can make this building workforce for the next 50 years, which I think is probably the, the standard we should use for investment on this scale.
And my understanding is too, of course, buildings don't magically come out of the ground in a minute or two. They take several years. So my understanding is this proposal in front of us would allow the continuation of all the city services or most of them during the, uh, construction?
Well, that's a huge challenge. And as we go into the planning, uh, phase, we really need to have a plan for that. It will be very disruptive during the construction phase. And, um, relocating people, um, during construction is, is going to be disruptive for the public. There won't be costs associated with that. And so we will really try to, as we're getting, uh, more advanced in the design, uh, process, have much clearer pictures as to, um, how that would work.
Thank you very much. I think you've got some good direction and hopefully you can get us some answers, additional information as requested so we can take action. Clearly tonight, this is a, you know, a lot of new information for us and we're not ready to, to really proceed. But hopefully, as soon as you're able, you can provide us that additional information. We can schedule for a work session and spend a little more time on this. Why don't we go into the next item, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, council.
Uh, next up is, is a briefing on stormwater issues. And Jason Witstrom is going to come forward to provide the council with that briefing. Um, just a, a quick introduction, and this is principally for, uh, the new members of council. The ordinance that is before you, uh, for the briefing tonight was, uh, adopted on first reading back in July. And it was referred out to, uh, boards and commissions for comment. And we had a discussion in November, December about, uh, final adoption. And there was an issue, uh, relating to the 35% impervious hard cap, which is, uh, currently the, the way that our Chesapeake Bay ordinance is administered in the city. If we move it out, uh, into this new structure with the new sta- with the state, uh, uh, construct, that hard cap goes away. And so the question is, should that be put back into the zoning ordinance? And we have done so in the draft that's before you in a way that we think is administratively feasible. So there's two purposes of to- tonight's briefing. It's first to get an overview of the stormwater ordinance, what it does in terms of water quality improvements and water quantity, uh, regulation in the city and the changes that the new ordinance would entail. And then I will, uh, jump in to talk about the zoning pe- or the, the, uh, the zoning code piece and get council feedback on that. One thing for the council to be aware of is that under the state mandate, we need to adopt this ordinance by April 1st. And so, uh, we want to get some feedback tonight, then engage, re-engage with the planning commission on it and then come back and, um, and take the final steps on the ordinance.
Jason?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm happy to present the proposed stormwater ordinance tonight. Uh, I know I've given a similar presentation in the past, but hopefully, uh, those members who have seen it aren't too bored with it. And, uh, hopefully, we'll learn a little bit about stormwater tonight. So before I really get into the meat of the ordinance, I just, uh, Wyatt gave somewhat of an introduction as to what has occurred to this, uh, point. But I provided a, a timeline for you to see here that this has had first reading back in July. We've done some public outreach with, um, boards and commissions as well as put up, uh, a lot of material on our website that, uh, we've been rolling out along with the stormwater utility fee information and the credit policy. Um, we've been fielding phone calls about this ordinance from developers, single-family homeowners, uh, townhome, um, ac- across the board. So, uh, there are some members aware of it, uh, in the public that are aware of this. Mostly the development community because this is an ordinance that is, uh, going across the state in some way, shape or form or another. Uh, it is important to note, as Wyatt said, that on April 1st, we have to have, uh, this ordinance adopted, um, with the criteria that's in it. So tonight's presentation, I'm going to focus on these four items that the ordinance achieves. And this is just an outline for you. So the four items being reorganization, the adoption of new regulations. This is, uh, includes some of the development criteria along with a, a permit that is currently, uh, held by the state that we have to take over. And also a clarification of our illicit discharge, uh, ordinance. So the first item I wanted to talk about was the reorganization. So this is just a, a brief summary of, of the, kind of the technical pieces of that. Um, but the purpose of this reorganization is to streamline the existing city code that we have. Um, it, it takes the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance and, uh, puts it together with our Erosion and Sediment Control ordinances. And we're doing this to create an all-in-one stormwater ordinance. So it's easier to implement, administer, enforce. And the development community, when they call us today, they have to page through different chapters of our ordinance and they, it's a little bit confusing. So this, this streamlines that approach. The, the second area I'd like to talk about is water quality. But before I really get into that, um, this is an area where I think it's important to understand what water quality concerns are here in terms of, uh, the Chesapeake Bay and the, and the mandates that we have. And it largely focuses on phosphorus. Uh, there's also nitrogen sediment, but phosphorus is one of the, the key indicators that we, we go after. Um, when you go after phosphorus, inherently you get sediment and nitron- nitrogen as well. Uh, so for, uh, this PowerPoint presentation and, you know, the ordinance, um, we're going to talk about where phosphorus comes from. And as you see here, this is the phosphorus cycle. It includes, uh, phosphorus from erosion sediment control, which is shown here on the right side of the screen. My pointer is not working, obviously. My pointer is not working, obviously. So it comes from soil erosion. As water hits the ground, it runs off, it collects sediment, and along with phosphorus, oh, thank you, here, along with what we do on our lawns, fertilizers, pesticides also have phosphorus in them. And one area that most people don't know about, or don't really think about, is that rain inherently has phosphorus in it. This is due to man-made air pollution. So automotive industries, also in the years that we've, even today, industries that don't filter their smoke from the chimneys, it puts phosphorus into the air. The water collects it, comes down, it hits our impervious surfaces, runs off, and goes into our streams. This phosphorus is then uptaken by plants that are in the water, or we know them as algae. This creates algae blooms, which then blots out the sun, it changes the character of the water, and then it hurts aquatic life to the point that you have large fish kills. So we've seen some of those stories and heard that about the Chesapeake Bay. This is what we're talking about tonight. So in a natural state, which this chart here represents in the top left-hand corner, is what you would expect from a natural cover in terms of runoff. It shows here ten percent, has a percentage for infiltration, evaporation. And so you can see what I've circled here on this slide is where Falls Church is today, between the thirty-five and fifty percent range. And one of the important things to note on this slide is that there's a three times the increase in runoff from a natural ground condition to what we have here in the city. And this is, it's important to notice that the plants are really what is kind of filtering out the water and taking that phosphorus, and that's what they use for growth. So when we eliminate that, and we send it downstream, it has an impact on our streams negatively. And this is a chart, it's pretty common in my industry, that shows a link between impervious cover and aquatic life. And what it represents is that macroinvertebrates are little critters in the water. So it shows on the bottom there, impervious cover, the higher percentage that you have for your land, the lower counts of macroinvertebrates, which is basically showing that the water will not support life as the higher you go. As I mentioned before, the city is somewhere between thirty-five and fifty percent, and this is well above where most of us consider that is reasonable, which is around the ten to twelve percent range. Once you go above that, aquatic life is diminished. So as engineers, in looking at water quality, we can actually compute some numbers here. The method we do that is called the Virginia runoff method. Just simply, though, it's that we can measure the amount of phosphorus that comes off of different surfaces. So I show here there is a runoff from impervious surfaces and a concentration associated with that, along with pervious surfaces. But as in the slides I showed you before this, there is a definite link about impervious cover with high runoff values, and is a major contribution to pollution. So what I decided to do is give you an example of what actually occurs now under our current ordinance in terms of development. And this is a home in the City of Falls Church that originally was somewhere in the range of eighteen to twenty-two percent impervious, which is quite common here in homes that have been redeveloped. And when we do the math that I mentioned earlier, it has a runoff concentration or a total accumulation of phosphorus on a per-acre-year basis of point five pounds. When somebody comes in and they want to redevelop their property, there's a cap of thirty-five percent impervious cover, per the zoning rules. And this allows for an increase of an additional pound over an acre per year. So you can see our ordinance is allowing in single-family homes for an increase, and we just talked about how that was a bad thing. So the new ordinance, again, this is across the state that we have to adopt by April 1st of this year, has new standards in place that is going to prevent any increase in the phosphorus from development. As it's shown here, it's a twenty percent reduction on non-single-family homes. So this is, what we see here in the city is like a BJ's, Northgate, or the Harris Teeter project. It is currently a ten percent reduction required for those larger sites. This is an increase in that level. And also, one of the big changes is the point four one pounds per acre per year for single-family homes. As you saw in the last slide, this is a difference in the way that we do it today. If we want to go tougher than that, we have to petition the Soil and Water Conservation Board and give them a good reason as to why we need tougher standards. So if we take that same site that I provided before, which is shown here on the left, and then you apply the proposed ordinance as before council, you'll get a same, similar situation where this ordinance will allow someone to go up to thirty-five percent impervious cover. But in order to do so, they have to mitigate that water. And so there are different ways to do that, and in this picture, I just simply drew in a kidney-shaped rain garden. And by channeling the runoff from the site into a rain garden where it naturally infiltrates into the ground, you can get an equivalency of point four one pounds per year. So I'm not sure if many of you have seen these, but we do have some demonstration rain gardens in the city. Again, there are other ways to approach this task. You could do a cistern, an infiltration trench, and storm filters. We estimate that it's roughly about seven to ten thousand dollars to do a stormwater infiltration practice on your home to meet this requirement that the state's put out. If you, if this is a rain garden, or any type of practice like this, we call them best management practices, if you have one as a condition of a development, our new stormwater ordinance, or sorry, stormwater utility fee will give you a credit off of your fee. It's a twenty percent if it's a condition of development, and a forty percent credit off the area that drains to the rain garden, or whatever practice, of forty percent. So there's also another credit for water quantity, which this also has inherently some quantity aspects as well. So what my point is, is that with this new ordinance, even though those that are required to do it, they do get some leniency, because it is providing a benefit that the city doesn't have to go after later in terms of pollutant removal. So the other side, when we talk about water in general, we talk about water quality, but we also talk about quantity. And this is the one that most people, I would say, when I got into stormwater, this is where my heart was, is solving drainage problems. So the ordinance addresses water quantity as well. The current standards that we have today are also the previous state requirements, called Minimum Standard Nineteen, but it largely focuses on peak flow. So on this slide, what I've tried to represent is what peak flow is. And it's more or less something that you can point to where it's a channeling of water. So in this slide, you'll see here on the left picture is a swale. And water comes out of the pipes, it collects in the swale, and goes down, and eventually it leads to a stream. The water that is sheet flow in this picture would be coming off the asphalt from the right of the picture to the left, and down, across the parking lot, across the grass, and into the swale. To give you an idea, sheet flow, like in the picture on the right, if this is your backyard, the sheet flow is coming from either the left or the right in this situation, and eventually it'll find the low point, it'll channelize, sometimes over grass like this, and eventually engineers design it to go into a pipe system, or in this case, there's a great inlet in that yard. So the two ways that we look at this, again, is peak flow is something that we really focus on with our current standard. There's a lot of regulations out there to protect against erosion of our streams, also to provide adequate pipes so that the water can get there and not flood out of them, to keep the streets clear. Sheet flow is an area that we actually struggle with today, and I think that most of our citizens, when I hear complaints, they are concerned about sheet flow issues, about multiple properties draining across each other, and eventually they turn into the picture on the right. But on their way there, they do make a mess of things. So the new ordinance does address sheet flow. So again, our water volume or quantity concerns are really about protecting our downstream areas from increased volume and flow rate. And now that we have the same peak flow rates, we have to hold developers to a standard of ten years storms, events, so they can't exceed what a pre-developed rate was. We also have language in there now that says that if there's a known drainage problem downstream of a sheet flow area, then you can require them to address that as part of that development. It also has language in there, as you kind of see, the state is moving towards a infiltration, natural infiltration technique. And so the reduction in the phosphorus is really focusing on ways that we can go about, putting it more naturally into the ground as it did before we turned everything impervious. So the development criteria does require some procedural changes to how we do business here at the city. One of the cleanest ways to do this was to create a stormwater management permit. This is no different than if somebody came in today, they're not going to be charged an extra fee to apply for a building permit. But it's more or less how we have structured these development criteria and how we'll administer it. So we've created the stormwater management permit, again, is the one-stop shop for stormwater. It'll give a clear and concise understanding of what developers have to do to redevelop our property, redevelop property in the city. Today, we have the Chesapeake Bay Interdisciplinary Review Team that reviews applications that fall under water quality. And this is being replaced in this ordinance with the Stormwater Management Review Team. It's made up of the same group. It's the city arborist, one of the city engineers, along with a planner. And they'll be, again, looking at Chesapeake Bay, but they also have a wider scope where they'll look at anything that falls under the stormwater management permit. The process of this is a little bit adjusted, which provides a little wider input in the process. So today, if you have a development and you go to the CBRT meeting after a site plan is somewhat approved internally, and then it goes, and it gives the public an opportunity to see what the project is about, learn how it's meeting water quality criteria. The plan is then approved then, and it can be issued if, as long as there are other conditions for development are approved, the plan is approved. What this process does now is that the Stormwater Management Review Team is advisory to the director of Public Works. And this is significantly different in that that meeting will still occur, the citizens' concerns will be heard, and then it is ultimately up to the Public Works Director to approve the plan as a recommendation from the review team. It does change in the sense that city council, because this is no longer in the zoning ordinance, the planning commission, it's now shifted to the city council for appeals. One or the other, and the last item I've identified here, is something to address a concern that we currently have, is that developers will come in and build under the old criteria and purposely leave a section out. And if they come back two years later, they can add on to their development under a certain amount of square footage and then not have to do some of the stormwater development criteria they would have had to do in the first place. So what we've done here is we've said that that is a common plan of development, if the intent was to go around the development criteria in the beginning because of cost concerns, or maybe a tree concern. And so we've set a definite period associated with that, to try and limit that as much as possible. So the third item is the VSMP General Permit for Construction Activities. As I mentioned earlier, this is not necessarily a new permit, but it will be new for us to implement. The state currently does this at DEQ. They require any property that is one acre or more to get a stormwater pollution prevention plan. The elements of this plan are very similar to the elements that we have on our site plans and grading plans. And so it's not a large leap for us to take this task on. It is a little bit different, and there's some training associated with it, but we're confident that we can undertake this. The idea here is to streamline stormwater, and our developers are actually probably pleased that this is in our shop instead of having to petition the state as well as us to do a project. There is an oversight fee that the state collects, they kind of set that rate in there. So the way that this will work is that a developer pays their twenty-eight percent of the fee, and again, they have that set rate online, the cash never comes into the city, and then we charge our normal development fees. And the last piece that I have for you tonight is the illicit discharge regulations. Right now, our current ordinance is a little bit weak in terms of illicit discharge. It's in Chapter Thirty-four, Solid Waste. And this makes it very clear that anything that is not stormwater runoff going into our stormwater pipes or inlets is an illicit discharge, except for firefighting. Obviously, there will be some discretion in how we administer this, people washing cars in their driveway, although it's not a good practice. It's not like we'll become car washing police. But it is an education piece that we try to address. But this is really aimed at those who throw waste, or buses, or car wash facilities that discharge improperly into our stormwater network. And the picture there is actually one that we shut down. They used, it was a car wash that actually piped all of their drainage from inside the building into a stormwater inlet. So you can go and look at that pipe now, it's much cleaner. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, great. Questions, comments? Mr. Snyder?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to direct everyone's attention to Page Three of the staff handout, because I think it's probably the most useful part, that I think useful for us and useful for the public. And there are really three categories. There's new development of a single-family home, there's redevelopment, which I assume would mean things like adding on a porch, or a granny flat, or a place for your kids, or something like that. And then any new development, not single-family home. So those are basically the three categories that are in this chart. Now, it seems to me this whole phosphorus thing works really well in rural areas, but when you start to apply it in urban areas like City of Falls Church, you end up with a pretty complicated situation. And maybe that's why the state provided the local option to exempt single-family homes. And I want to focus on that. Why do you think they did that?
I can't, it would be my guess. I don't really know what the answer would be. I did sit on the state and local government advisory committee that went through this, which was represented by small, and large, and rural, and non-rural counties. I know from the group that was there, that is very similar positions like me, all of them would wish that the point four one applied, as we've shown it here. And the reason for that is that the Chesapeake Bay TMDL, which is a mandate to remove pollution from our stormwater runoff, is kind of looming, and there's a large cost associated with that. And each development that you allow to exceed or increase impervious, which is, again, the phosphorus increase, means that you have to do a negative for that in a stormwater project, plus what you needed to do to achieve the TMDL. So the reason, I think personally, is that there are political bodies involved, and there are concerns about costs associated with redeveloping property, and that they want to... and that they want to give, I guess, the low-hanging fruit, in a sense, an option out. In talking with some of our jurisdictions, Arlington and Alexandria, it's actually the more intensely developed that want to focus on the single-family, because it's very difficult to remove these pollutants, it's costly. Fairfax County, on the other hand, has a large number of stormwater management ponds that were put in when they kind of did their urban sprawl. And they found it's very cost-effective to renovate those ponds to get the pollutant removals they need. So, they have these centralized water treatment facilities. We have one pond that is the size of maybe half the chamber in the City of Falls Church that we could retrofit. But outside of that, we're really strapped for areas that we can address.
So, that really isn't available to us. So, it occurred to me that we really need to focus on these three categories of properties. And while I could understand new development of a single-family home, you're going to spend a lot of money, and you might as well spend more money to deal with that, because it's probably not a major factor. But if you've got a single-family home and you want to add a porch to it, or you want to add a granny flat, suddenly, you're triggering very draconian elements to it. You're adding significant costs to what would be a fairly modest addition to a home. So, I'm going to recommend that we give serious consideration to some sort of better treatment of our single-family homeowners who are already carrying a huge amount of tax burden in the city. And a key point here is that, but still maintain the 35% cover, which I think we ought to do. I think it's something the community understands, I think everyone here understands that. But I'm impressed with this discussion in lines 292 to 295, where we're saying that this new phosphorus standard is equivalent to only allowing 14% to 16% impervious cover. So, that's almost confiscatory. You're saying we allow 35% impervious cover now, but the equivalent of what we're doing to people is to cut that in half? So, I don't, I have some serious concerns about a potential rebellion out there affecting what we're trying to do for larger environmental purposes. And I think as more and more single-family homeowners understand what's being done to them, and I use those terms directly, in terms of even modest improvements to their properties, I think you're going to get significant pushback. So, I think that's maybe in large measure why there's some exemption for additions and other things to existing structures. On the other hand, I'm less concerned about what would, in most cases, be a developer situation with the building of an entirely new house and the fairly minimal cost to that. So, I'm seeing, if you don't exclude new, single-family homes from this, you're adding a small portion to an already large project. You have exactly the opposite impact if you don't exclude or provide some exemption for what's called redevelopment or the addition to an existing home where your, things that you're demanding in order to meet this phosphorus standard, which, again, I think works much better in rural areas than it does in urban areas, but in any event, that's a standard we have to live with, the cost factors are reversed. A fairly modest improvement in your home would trigger fairly significant costs. And then, other developments, I would assume that you would build this into the development cost. So, those are some concerns that I have. I do agree we ought to maintain the 35% lot cover, but I think we ought to give serious consideration to some sort of better treatment for existing, single-family homes, because I'm afraid, as people understand the impact of it, that it could well serve to undermine the public support for the entire project. Thank you.
If you don't mind, Mr. Mayor. The development criteria in this ordinance only applies to development that exceeds 2,500 square feet of land disturbance. In the time that I've spent here with the city, I would say that 20, to trigger 2,500 square feet, it is not just an addition, you have to do a large-scale addition to a home to cross that threshold. So, I think that you should consider that as well.
So, none of this is triggered, let's say, so what you're telling me, then, is that this chart really doesn't capture the entire story? That if you were adding a front porch, which in the typical case wouldn't be 2,500 square feet, let's face it, of, what would that be roughly? What's that, 25 by 100, or what are we talking about?
Fifty by 50, 50 feet by 50 feet.
50 feet by 50 feet. So, if you're not doing that much, then you're not triggering the new requirements?
That's correct.
Okay, well, that's positive move, but I need to have more of a sense about what 50 feet by 50 feet is in terms of an addition.
It's as big as this room, I mean, in other words.
Quite large.
What's that?
It's quite large, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, your house may not be 50.
So, the scenario that I'm talking about, you want to add a porch, you want to add a granny flat, something like that, unless it's really huge, you're not going to trigger this requirement to meet this additional phosphorus standard. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yeah, I think in terms of your budget for an addition that large or that would disturb that much, maybe this is 10% of the cost to do something like that.
Okay, so if it's less than the 2,500 square feet, then you're not triggering the additional requirements to meet the phosphorus standard. Is that what you're telling me?
Yes.
Okay, that needs to be very clear, because I didn't pick that up from reading this at all.
And let me just add, though, in our earlier discussions, I had raised the exact same concern about keeping the 35% hard cap in the zoning ordinance. Because if you just put it into the zoning ordinance without any additional language, then you would have the situation where someone puts in a small addition, or even puts in something that you don't need a permit for at all, and you could exceed the 35% hard cap. And that raised real questions about, A, how would we even administer that? But B, concern just about, mostly how to administer that, but also, I think, fairness to a property owner that might be putting in a shed or just something very small, but then all of a sudden have a permit that is, right now, just a walk-through permit, be something that would take weeks while we do this impervious coverage calculation. And so, the language that we've proposed would be that the 35% hard cap of impervious coverage, if it is to be moved into the zoning ordinance, should be triggered and enforced only when there's a grading plan that is before the city. So, it becomes a redevelopment enforcement action, along with everything else in the stormwater ordinance, as opposed to simply you come in for a remodel of your kitchen and a regular building permit, and we check, you know, for all zoning compliance. So, I think we've addressed that by tying it to that 2,500-foot soil disturbance trigger as well.
I have a question too about that, although Phil, it looks like you have a question or... So, you're saying that 35% coverage would only be triggered if you proposed to disturb 2,500 additional square feet?
Yeah, so when that permit comes through the city, the zoning administrator would check it to confirm that there's not more than 35% of the lot is covered with impervious surfaces, and that's when that would happen.
So, to me, I mean, I guess, I don't know, it certainly raises some questions for me, because you could have a house that's a 34% coverage and comes in for 2,000 square feet, which is a 50 by 40 addition, for example, maybe, I don't know, depending on what lot size they have, but if you've got a smaller lot, that could put you up to 50% coverage, which I think is kind of contrary to what people have an expectation for. So, I'd probably like to hear a little bit more about that, and probably like to hear from the director of planning. And does the planning commission weigh in on this, by the way?
On the trigger, as is proposed here at 2,500 square feet, or the requirement for a grading plan, they have not. So, we want to go back to the planning commission, have the discussion with them about that, and then we'll come back to council.
Because I do have some concerns that I would like to hear a little bit more about that and flush that issue out a bit more. I do have a few more questions, but Phil, if you had some questions, I'm happy to defer to you. Okay, well, why don't you go ahead, Mary Beth, and I'll come back, you can run back up to me afterwards.
First of all, thank you, Jason, for the PowerPoint, because as I read through this, I was so confused. So, you have cleared up a lot of my questions, but I do have some more on lines 181 and 182. I'm just, when you're talking about this is a new duty for DPW, many of the elements contained within the SWIP are already reviewed as part of the city site plan process. Does that mean that there needs to be new staff to do this?
No, there, no additional staff is needed. It's very similar to what we review now, it just has a few little elements that are different.
And then, on page eight, line 313, 314, it says, "If the city council chooses to adopt a 35% impervious coverage rule, public works staff recommends the limit be tied to something besides stormwater to avoid it being considered an arbitrary standard with no engineering basis." Does that tie into what? Why, I just said, I don't understand that.
So, by removing the Chesapeake Bay ordinance out of the zoning ordinance and converting our current standard of 35% to a numerical criteria, there is no percent cap exit that exists. In jurisdictions where I used to work, for example, down in Virginia Beach, they've had to live with a 16% equivalency for the last 10 years or 10-plus years, because they're right on the Chesapeake Bay. That doesn't mean that those homes are on lots that are so large that it's hard to approach 16%. It means that they've been mitigating the pollutants that they're generating. So, what this does is that it goes away, but it also becomes somewhat cost-prohibitive once you go over the threshold and you have to do a stormwater practice. The larger your impervious footprint, the more expensive your practice becomes. You know, if you have deep pockets, you can do a very large rain garden with cisterns, and then theoretically, you could put 70% impervious on a lot. The equivalent to our stream is that it has to be handled in some way, shape, or form that meets engineering practices. So, it doesn't really make a difference in terms of it. So, if you want a cap on a property, it's no longer tied to water quality necessarily, because there's a standard for that. It's not tied to quantity, because there's definitely a standard for that as well. Then why have an impervious cap? Is it as aesthetic? Is it a zoning piece that you want? So, I think that's what I meant by that, and that's why it was addressing.
And so, in Arlington County, they do have a coverage, a lot coverage rule, and I think it's, I think it's like 50% or 56%. But they have a public policy rationale behind it. You know, things that are for people walking tend to be exempted, things that are for cars tend to be counted in that coverage. And it's about density, and it's about community character. That's the criteria for it. And so, what that expresses, we're taking an old stormwater standard and now sort of making it a zoning standard, and we ought to flesh that out a little bit more. Staff is on its work plan with the planning commission and tends to take that up as a policy question, but that'll probably take several months to do. In the meantime, we have this ordinance that needs to be adopted by April 1st. So, as a way to sort of get through the administrative feasibility problems that I had articulated back in November, if we tie it to the 2,500 square feet of disturbed soil, it is certainly administratively feasible now, and we can do so fairly and, I think, efficiently. And that'll get us through a bridge to sort of building maybe a deeper policy about lot coverage.
So, then, for the purposes of this, the 35% cap would come out for now?
No, it would stay in, but it would be enforced only when we have a grading plan in front of us. And that's the status quo. Just so everybody's clear, that's the way it's done today. And so, we would be maintaining the status quo as we go forward until we have this deeper conversation about lot coverage as a community character issue.
Additional comments? Mr. Z? Sure, Oliver.
What is the standard lot coverage in the city right now?
It's roughly 18% to 22%, and I say that because where I got that number from is I polled the grading plans that I get, and the ones that have not redeveloped, that's approximately where they are. Those that have redeveloped go right up to the 35%, 34, 32 range.
Mr. Brew?
Just, it's always good to look back at the minutes. And we had some pretty extensive conversations about how to analytically move forward on this, and I'm glad that we had sort of a summary to make sure that all the council members were up to speed on the discussions that we've had on this. But I would just suggest that we think back about how to structure some of this debate. And I think Vice Mayor Snyder sort of hit upon some of these points. And I think when I try to summarize some of the discussion, I'm going to paraphrase or read through some of our discussions before. And analytically, it would be the first part of the discussion, and I think this is some of the aspects that Vice Mayor Snyder was getting at, was deciding whether the regulation should apply to residential. And if it should, then do we want to layer on top of that the 35% cap? Or should that be maintained as the proxy in the code as the minimum? And then, two, if the council decides to adopt both, meaning the 35% and also the new phosphorus regulations, then the next series of questions is whether and where it goes into the code, and what impacts does it have, and whether it's in zoning or elsewhere. So, I think that's how it sort of broke down of how we would answer the questions. So, I suggest we go along some of those lines, or else the community is just going to get lost in the technical aspects, et cetera. So, I offer that as the framework, again, to discuss this with the public and understand what it means, rather than sort of getting ourselves lost and waiting in the water, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Brew. Other comments? Mr. Z?
Thanks. I am wondering whether the policy concerns for consideration that summarized 202 to 232 is, forms the heart of what staff is recommending. And if that's true, I'm having a moderately difficult time following what is proposed that is in the city's interest based on discussions with the public or staff expertise as opposed to what the state is mandating. It's kind of clear to me that most of this document here is simply implementation of the state mandate, which is okay. All this work that has gone before, it is kind of tossed out because the state says you're going to go to this point 41. In my reading of the same passage, the table that, on, at 84, that so inflame my colleague here with regard to confiscatory policies, I must admit that I'm subject to the same degree of inflammation, because I'm not really understanding what this says besides point 41. So, I look forward to maybe a closer conversation with you to see what is I should be understanding or not understanding. So, I do have a question for you, which is that things that currently exist, how would they be treated? My commercial establishments, my understanding is they're not susceptible for coverage here. And if it's so intent, it's a measure of phosphorus discharge, which, as you know, is what is in detergent. A large part of that detergent fertilizer, well, we don't have a lot of fertilizer, except for people that fertilize their grass, and it runs off into water shit. And, you know, people wash their cars, and then some people take their cars to commercial car washes, and I see this stuff running down the street. I would assume this doesn't affect that operation at all. So, that's the question. And the last thing is a kind of a point of context. In 2006, 2007, in that period of time, we were, as council, reacting to a... time, we were, as council, reacting to emergency legislation that was passed in Alexandria to try to stop the, what they call the McMansion-ization of Northern Virginia. So not knowing, really having, not having the expertise or the history or context to go on that point in time, we settled on the 35% coverage because that just seemed like a good place to be, as well as making sure that heights of buildings didn't exceed 25 feet at the peak, not the peak, but the average of the roof. So the thinking back then was that there would be some point in time when we would be able to address water quality and quantity on its own merit, which is to say, do we hold some in our yards? Do we build up our stormwater infrastructure? And of course, we're doing all those things. But quite frankly, I would like to see a better treatment of the 35% cap instead of saying we should have that, and that's where we are as a city. So I think that we need to address the core of the matter, which is what do we do with the stormwater? But if you could answer the question with regard to existing businesses, I would appreciate it.
Sure. As I mentioned before, the trigger for the development standards that I've outlined tonight is 2,500 square feet of land disturbance, and that is across the board, whether it be R1A or a commercial or townhouse zoning. It has no difference. So if you exceed 2,500 square feet, and if it's a residential property, you would have to meet the point 41 standard. If it's a commercial, you'd have to meet the 20% reduction unless it's a brand-new facility in which you would have to do the point 41 for the site.
So you're saying I could put up a car wash and have incidental runoff continue to go into our streams?
One of the other parts of this is it does adopt new illicit discharge language. So our current language is in the solid waste code, and it says something to the effect, you won't put solid waste in the storm sewer system. And it goes on to define solid waste. This is a little bit more clear as it's about water, and it has solvents and different types of things like that. Car washes in general are a little bit different than most of the other things that we would see for illicit discharges in the sense that they can send some water to a storm infrastructure as long as they're permitted by the health department and DEQ. And what goes along with that is they have to do water monitoring of wherever they're discharging it, I think twice a year, and report those results to the state to make sure that they're doing it appropriately. We don't really have a say in that permitting process. Whenever we do have what we consider illicit discharge, we do check to make sure that they have their permit. If not, obviously, we alert the state.
Well, thank you for the explanation. It sounds perfectly logical. Let me just add one final word on this, which is that if I were a homeowner, and I just spent $10,000 on a water retention system, and the pump stopped working, and I had to go out and replace it, as I'm driving to the hardware store, I see my local friendly car wash discharging gallons upon gallons of soapy water in the street, you can be sure that I would call you. Thank you.
So I have a question or two. I don't know if anyone else has any additional comments, but I've got a question or two, and we'll try to wrap this discussion up. It's not an action item for tonight, correct? So we'll wrap up the discussion shortly. So you're proposing to take out the 35% cap and then have that addressed, be addressed separately to the extent desired in zoning ordinance because viewed as zoning matter, not as a stormwater detention for quality or quantity matter. Let me ask you, subject to, if this were removed from this provision, these provisions, and it was not addressed in the zoning ordinance, then the lot coverage, percentage of coverage would be subject only to setbacks? In other words, what are the setbacks from side rear lots? And then your ability to handle quantity and quality? So for example, if you wanted 80% coverage subject to your setbacks depending on the lot size, so long as you were able to detain and effectively manage quality, you would be able to do that under our ordinances, correct?
Yeah, that's no different than today on anything but R1A and R1B.
Okay. Well, I mean, I wouldn't make the comment that you'd mentioned, or Wyatt mentioned, the lot coverage in Arlington. And my recollection of how that came about was there were some very large McMansions built that changed the character of neighborhoods that people didn't like. You know, you had a row of sort of the same-sized house, and all of a sudden somebody put a monster house in the neighborhood. And it was a reaction to that is where you got lot coverage regulation in Arlington, to my recollection. And so I think it is important for us to maintain some lot coverage standards in our zoning ordinance, if not here. And it may be more appropriate and more logical to be in a zoning ordinance. But to the extent we go forward with this, I don't want to forget about that because that's an important issue that can change the character of our neighborhoods if we don't address, if we leave it hanging for a period of time, six months, a year. All sorts of things can happen to a neighborhood in that time. So I think it's important that we do keep this on the fast track, the lot coverage issue on a fast track and not have it, you know, wait for months and months in this race forward. A few additional questions for you. Is the language of this ordinance essentially copied from the state law? In other words, are we taking enabling legislation and essentially, and I'm not faulting that, but I'm just saying, are we essentially parroting the language that the state has authorized or required localities to adopt?
It is a mix of doing that along with our existing code. This ordinance in some way, shape, or form that you have before you, we've worked with AMEC and David Boliva, who's a stormwater policy guy at the state level. We've worked with him early on. Being on that committee with the state and local government group, I got an advanced copy of the ordinance. And so we actually put this together as the one-stop shop that I was talking about. And the state came back and heard about we were doing that, and actually wanted to take this ordinance as the model because they want others to do it all in one. So we kind of took what they did, and then we made it what we thought was better. The original law kind of just referenced out to a lot of VAC areas where a developer would come in and look at it and go, well, why am I looking at this? I should have just looked at the state regulation. So we've made it very clear as to everything. It hardly references out anything.
Okay. And let me ask you about sheet flow. You'd mentioned some of sheet flow, and there would be additional, the ability to, I guess, require some additional steps be taken in the event of sheet flow coming from a neighbor's property. Who enforces that? In other words, do I call up and say, hey, I've had sheet flow from my two other neighbors. I want you to have them mitigate this sheet flow. Can you explain a little bit more about that? Because I'm sure people in the city, given the stormwater problems, have it all over the place.
So again, the development criteria that I've listed tonight applies to sites that exceed 2,500 square feet of land disturbance. So if there's a new home or an addition being put on, that triggers that land disturbance form or that amount, that's when we look at this and say, how are they handling stormwater? Is it being done in a smart way? What's the best way to do that? In areas where there is less than 2,500 square feet, there is no rule that would apply to that situation. What we do today, when somebody calls in about that concern, is we typically meet with the homeowners together. Sometimes it's a matter of they just haven't spoken to each other about the issue, or other times they have and they don't like each other. But we try to mitigate the problem by introducing, well, here's some techniques that you could do on your site that would help the two parties out. I would not say that we've resolved all of them, but I think that we've done a pretty decent job of getting people to understand the impact of the, an example would be the corrugated plastic pipe that the neighbors like to take and attach to their downspout and then point it right at their neighbor's property without, oh, it's, you know, it's dry over here. I don't really care. So we'll go out and we'll talk to the neighbors and say, you know, this, can you redirect it this way? Have you thought of a swale here? Or a garden of some sort, mulch bed, you know, something to soak up the water. So it doesn't, this only addresses over 2,500 square feet. It's something, the other areas, something we struggle with.
If the 35% cap is going to be moved into zoning, what's the timeframe on that? And when you lay the timeline out, can you note that also?
I should have been clear about this upfront. It's on page 56 of the ordinance. So the ordinance language has been drafted. We're going to talk with the planning commission about it. Our operating principle is that we can actually do this on second reading when it comes back to the council. So it could be adopted the same night that the council adopts everything else. We need to get our city attorney to agree with that. But we've had some initial discussions on it. But because it really maintains the status quo, and we're already amending the zoning ordinance by taking all this stuff out of the zoning ordinance, and then this just takes one piece of it and keeps it there, we think it passes the no substantive change between first reading and second reading. But we want to just make sure that that's the case so that this is an important ordinance, that it's adopted properly. And we haven't made a final determination on that, but that's what our thinking is.
Wrap up and move on to the next item. Looks like it's a resolution. Do you want to call the matter, Madam Clerk?
Yes. The next item, council, is TR 14-08, Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute on the City's behalf a memorandum of agreement between the City of Falls Church and the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority.
Good evening, council. Wanted to bring back to you the formal MOU for the 30% pot of money for the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority. This is an item that staff have briefed you on during work sessions, and we briefly mentioned it at the retreat in terms of the new state funding. There's 100% money for Northern Virginia. 70% is managed through MBTA. And you'll see on lines 34 to 42, the projects that have been approved for the City of Falls Church related to the 70% pot. The specific MOA that's before you this evening is for the 30%. This is the amount of money that is for our local use and control. It does have some specific uses that's allowed for, and it does have a match requirement, which in council's current FY15 budget, you approved 800,000 to go towards VDOC grant and money for Hunt and Avenue, so we meet that threshold. And so this MOA would allow us to be eligible to draw down that money. That equivalency needs to continue in the future years to give us that continued match money. And that is in council's budget guidance for it to be included in the upcoming budget deliberations, and it is in the proposed CIP that's been presented to the planning commission. The ask tonight is to approve this MOA, which has been reviewed by localities, approved by MBTA's Council of Councils, and then through the legal working group that, as you know, Vice Mayor Snyder serves on. And isn't its form approved by MBTA? And now it's to council for approval, which will allow us to start drawing down the money and using it, which is also being programmed into the proposed CIP. Separately, staff will come back to you with the 70% agreement because all the terms have not been finalized. It's still in draft form. MBTA has not adopted it. So we'll bring it back to you once that is ready. But they have approved the programs, the projects. And so we do anticipate doing that sooner than later. I'll be glad to answer any questions versus going through it in a lot more detail because we have had the opportunity to talk about MBTA funding.
Thank you. Mr. Snyder, you're heavily involved in this. Is there anything you'd like to add to the discussion?
Not really. Just to underscore that this is the standard agreement for all jurisdictions in similar situation.
That is true. And because it's a similar and adopted for all, we're not allowed to modify the key terms, but we were involved in the development of the document.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Just one. Excuse me. Just one. Since, between lines 92 and 107, there's reference in four separate instances to additional staff, then I assume that we will, at some point, when the budget comes up, see some additional staff suggested in connection with this. I just wonder, is there any standard that we have to meet in terms of what percentage of the money is deployed to, you know, projects on the ground, and what percentage is allocated to staff?
The state code doesn't deliberate to that level, but we do use standard estimates in terms of what amount you do for project management and staffing versus a project, and that usually is in the 15% range. There will be in the proposed CIP a discussion of the staff, and for the operating budget, certainly something we're discussing currently with the city manager as he's developing the proposed budget for council. The good news in this case is that the staff can be covered by these funds to actually administer the project. So we wouldn't be looking for additional local tax funding, just the resources to implement the new and needed transportation projects. That will be a council final action.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? Do we have a motion? Can we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve TR 14-08.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Let's open the matter to the public. Is there anyone who would like to comment from the public? The matter's closed to the public. Any council comments? No? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote?
On TR 14-08, Mr. Brug?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, council.
Okay. Let's move on to consent items. It looks like we only have one. Which is an appointment?
Yes, Mayor and City Council, I would like to make a motion to place, to nominate Mr. Richard Rankin to the Falls Church Cable Television Board to serve the remaining unexpired term, beginning from as soon as he could be sworn in until the end of the term, which is 2016, December 31, 2016. And since I don't have the, before anyone seconds it, since I don't have the revised agenda in front of me, if I have part of that wrong, someone correct me.
It's to appoint Richard Rankin to the Falls Church Cable Access Corporation Advisory Board for the unexpired term of November 1, 2013, to October 31, 2016.
Well, that would be the motion.
Okay. Second? Do we have a second? Okay. Should we call the roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
All righty. That, Mr. Z made the motion. Mr. Duncan was the second. Mr. Brug?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z? And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Okay. Let's move on. Is there any business not on the agenda? No? Any council member comments? Mr. Duncan?
Questions about scheduling? Could we talk about when either the Budget and Finance Committee and/or the Economic Development Committee are planning to next to meet? Have any calendaring activities been undertaken on either of those?
They have not. And so, you know, we should follow up offline and ideally set some regular meeting times to help with everybody's schedule.
Okay. Happy to do that. Thank you.
Just on that, on the budget, or I'm sorry, on the EDC, I think we were trying to set up Mondays, or alternating Mondays on that. So we were hoping to meet this coming Monday, but that's a holiday. And then we were thinking about just doing it Tuesday right before the council meeting. And Mr. Duncan, I think that caused you to have some scheduling problems. So I had asked Wyatt to check with staff to see if there was other dates that week that could work. I'd like to schedule a meeting before the 25th, before we take up the Kensington. But there's only so much we can do if we've got conflicting members' calendars. But I'd like to do that before the 24th and have that as one of the items on the agenda.
Okay. Well, we can do a little online business. I'm hoping that my flight from Knoxville will be back by 4:30. I mean, I've made arrangements to be here. So if you find that that is the only time that's convenient for everyone to meet. So, if you find that that is the only time that's convenient for everyone to meet, go ahead, and I'll hope for the best.
Why don't we tentatively do that, just so we can get the posting out, and then also see if there's alternative dates that work, if for some reason the 20, if that Tuesday doesn't work?
We'll have a car waiting for you at the airport, Mr. Duncan.
Yes, I'm sure.
Police escort.
Kathy, the clerk will arrange that, I'm sure.
What was that date you wanted for EDC?
It'd be a week from, or I'm sorry, a week from tomorrow, whatever that date is.
Okay. Any other council member comments?
And then, we'll discuss budget and finance offline, because that definitely will happen after that date.
Ms. Connolly?
I just have a question for Mr. Shields about the water bills. And that is part of the, I think, part of the petition or an email that I received from a constituent. They're requesting some involvement or ability to participate or to be involved in the audit somehow, so that the community is engaged in what's happening and not just told, "Okay, here's the answers." And I'm just wondering if there's a process that's been set up to do that?
Well, I've responded to, one of the folks who've inquired about it, who had requested a meeting about it, that we're gathering information right now, just as part of the procurement process. I'd like to have a clearer picture as to what the best practices would be to, from a utility management perspective, to answer the questions, and then sit down and talk with them about that. Ultimately, will be public funds that are used for this audit, and so, we need to make sure that this isn't pursuing, you know, private questions or more detail than necessarily the public interest might be served by. So, the scoping, I'm happy to have input on it, but I think ultimately, we need to have a scope that's feasible, that can be done in a reasonable period of time, and answer the, I think, the questions that are most resonant in people's minds. I will take the opportunity to state, again, that, you know, based on our customer services staff experience, they have not identified any problems with the bills. We are taking calls. We're addressing calls as they come in, and there have not been any particularly large number of questions raised about bills that couldn't be answered. And so, that's just background for the public. But, you know, ultimately, we'll have an outside group take a look at it. And I think it's mostly important, because we're wrapping things up, and we're sort of closing the books on our water system, and I think it's helpful to have an outside look in that context.
Okay. Any other comments?
I have one more.
Okay. Two, I've got one for you, one from Karen.
All right. And my other comment just relates to the proceeds of the water sale. And that is that we had a work session, discussed three different options. After that, I attended the EDA meeting the following night. All of the EDA members sat in that work session and listened to us discuss that. And at the meeting the next day, they were completely confused about all the things that we talked about, even though we seemed to be coming up with different questions. And I couldn't really help explain all those different options. So, I guess what I'm asking for is, what is the calendar for when we're going to decide those things? And are there other options available that we're not on that three-option sheet? Are we looking at bigger-picture things and saying, "Where is the economic development potential that we can use with this money?" So, I guess, I don't just want to go down the path of those three options. Are there other options out there? What would be the process to discuss them?
Well, you know, if there are, if there is an interest in the council to discuss land banking, just as an example, or other investments that are more geared not towards public facilities, but incentivizing economic development, that is a different skill set and in a kind of an analysis that we would do. And that is, that has not really been looked at. And it's a whole lot more complex. So, what we're planning to do is come back to the council at a work session soon, and it could be as soon as next week, just with additional information on the options that we've discussed that are responsive to the questions that came out of the last work session discussion. So, that's what we're working on right now. If there are other options that the council wants to study, then we're going to need to take more time to do those.
Okay. Ms. Oliver?
I just wanted to report out from the retirement board meeting that I attended the other night. And the retirement board was trying to move quickly, and they said, "Best case, on Tuesday, they might have information about how you might structure putting the funds into the investments." More likely, it would be another two weeks before they could do that. So, I just wanted to report out in general. I also wanted to say that, you know, it was a very interesting presentation from the actuaries about what the implications would be to putting the money in. They had these lovely moving graphs where they could say, "Well, if the next ten years look like 1928 to 1938, this is what it would mean. If the next ten years look like 1964 to 1974, this is what it can mean." It was just very interesting to see that play out and to understand how this is riskier and how this could be difficult to message in the future.
Will we be getting more of that information? Does anyone plan to prepare a report, or any sort of insight for the full council to actually hear a little bit more of that?
The retirement board had proposed that they would try to create a proposal for how you would designate the implications of doing that, and how future councils could understand the benefit that they were getting in that year from that decision to do that, that they might have before our next work session. But most likely, I'm guessing, it would be another work session before we would have that.
To the extent you're able to, you know, encourage them to expedite things, that would be great. So, we've got a lot on our plate. All right. One, did you have a comment, Mr. Snyder? So, why don't we go ahead and move on to the, to the minutes, or to the, yes, the minutes of our last, what is the date on that? November 25th. Are any corrections to the minutes from the 25th?
I gave the clerk a couple of corrections. Some of the potential disclosures that I had provided, I think the wrong template was put in.
Mr. Baruk's corrections are noted in the, they should be noted in the minutes in your package here.
So, they actually are already reflected in the minutes that are before us?
They should be. I thought that's what Veronica had done. That was what she was asked to do earlier.
Do we need to move to approve amended minutes, or just actually the minutes? Because they're already shown in there.
I don't, I don't think they're shown in here, at least not what I was given.
And Mr. Mayor, if we're making an addition or two?
Why don't we, before we get to that, why don't we make sure we have Mr. Baruk's additions in here, and then we'll move on to yours.
Mr. Baruk's edits had to do with his disclosures, I believe.
They were, it was just a template drop, so, and those were filed. So, I just asked them to put in actually what I sent in, minus a typo that I corrected.
Okay. If you'll help us with the motion, Ms. Bouchelle, I don't know how to actually capture that in the.
I think Phil may, if that's something addition.
Or two?
Mr. Baruk, if you look at line 804, is that a correction? Is that her, is that the correction that she made? Is that the edit? Where she struck out what was there, and she added, "I would like to disclose my daughter's enrolled daughter." At 810, is that the change?
You know, I don't have a new, I didn't get a new, there was nothing on the dais if there was a new version that she printed.
You don't have minutes that say revised?
No.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay. So...
Would you like to hold them over to the next meeting?
Yeah. Let's go and do that.
Why don't we hold them over, and I'll make sure that you all get a copy. I apologize.
It sounded like Phil may edit.
They're probably sitting in my office.
Phil, why don't you go and tell us your edit, so she can maybe take, keep track of them for the next.
Oh, just real quickly, line 105, I think Seth Hemingway, Hem is spelled Hemenway, isn't it? It's not, it's not like, not like the author, but like somebody else. And at line 199, it's, it's not Standard and Poor, is it? Isn't it Standard and Poor's? They may be poor, but they're Poor's in the name. Standard and Poor's. And those are the matters of great moment that I found.
Okay. Why don't we get those squared away with Mr. Baruk's disclosure for next go?
I apologize.
It's fine.
I apologize, Council. We'll square it away, and we'll have it for you in color, so you can see everything.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second. Okay. Can we have a vote on that? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? None? Okay. Let's, we're adjourned.